The Leominster City Council meeting is brought to you by the generous support of the Service Oil Company, 345 R Lancaster Street, Leominster, 978-466-1922. The Leominster City Council meeting is brought to you by the generous support of the Service Oil Company, 345 R Lancaster Street, Leominster, 978-466-1922.
City Council, 17-19, National Grid, to install one singular owned pole on Elm Street, beginning at a point approximately 22 feet south of the center line of the intersection of Elm Street and continuing approximately plus or minus eight feet in the south direction. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in support of the petition?
Hi, how are you? Mark Tapley from National Grid. So this petition is to replace an anchor that is inside of a tree that's already been cut, so to say, the tree's pretty much dead. The top of the tree's been cut off and the anchor is right in the, basically the last piece of the tree that's there to support the pole from falling over. So it's staked out in the area with a stake between the dead tree and another tree that's there. It'll just be a pole that goes in the ground with an anchor on it to support the existing pole.
This is up by the sportsman's club?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak in support of this petition? For the third time, is there anyone else that wishes to speak in support? Or anyone that wishes to speak against the petition? Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak against the petition? A third and final time, is there anyone else that wishes to speak against the petition? No, and are there any councilors that have any questions or comments? Okay, Mr. President, consider the hearing closed.
Thank you.
In a hearing before the council, 18-19, National Grid, install one singular owned pole on Tolman Avenue, beginning at a point approximately 135 feet southeast of the center line of the intersection of Dingly Street and continuing approximately plus or minus 15 feet in the northeast direction. National Grid to install one pole with an anchor and guide on private property with an easement to service house number 35. Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support?
Hi, yes. Mark Tapley again from National Grid. So this is for a service for a customer. We'll be placing the pole between two existing poles. The customer's moving their service from one side of their home to the other. And where it attaches, there's also a long span that crosses the street and goes down a driveway. And hooking anything else up to the midpoint of this line would begin to start drooping this line, causing potential issues across the street. So we're proposing to place the pole in the public way, right along the street with, in line with all the other poles. But their anchor would actually end up landing on the customer's property, which is what we have the easement for.
Is there any adverse effect to any of the neighbors by moving it? Is it closer to one neighbor or another than it was before?
No, no, there's not. The pole stays right in front of this customer's house.
Okay, so has been no issue with any of the neighbors?
No, there has not.
They know that that's going to be happening, right?
I mean, the homeowner does. I don't know if the neighbors do, but it's in front of the homeowner's house, not in front of any neighbor's house.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in support of the petition? The third time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support? Or anyone who wishes to speak against the petition? Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? A third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? If not, are there any comments or questions from the council? If not, Mr. President, I declare the hearing closed.
Thank you.
Yes, I was just looking, it's a public, yeah, it's legal affairs, right?
Yeah. Okay.
This is a hearing before the city council. C-24, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, allow Roll On America to connect into the Leominster water system through a special act of the legislature. I don't see the mayor here. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in support? If you could please state your name and address, please.
Hi, I am Jamie Cortez, I'm the general manager at Roll On America. And we are currently looking, obviously, to go on the Leominster water supply system. Our establishment is technically Lancaster, but there are no Lancaster pipes anywhere near there, so we're requesting to join into the Leominster. And we are next to Orchard Hills, which already is joined into the Leominster town water, so we were hoping to be able to connect to that line.
This has been discussed before, I believe?
It has, yes. It was, the petition was granted back in 2010, I believe, but they didn't, the general manager at the time didn't end up following through and proceeding with the process.
Okay. All right. Do you have a business card? Does the clerk have you, have a card for contact?
She has my email, yeah. I don't have a card on me, but she has my email and such.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak in support? Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Anyone wish to speak in opposition? A third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? If not, are there any councilors that have any questions or comments? Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to you. I don't know if you have any information that I'm not aware of.
I don't, I apologize for being late. No, I don't have any additional information.
Okay. All right, so leave the hearing open, or do you want to close it?
I think it makes sense to leave it open.
Yeah.
I defer to the third member as well.
Yeah, I think, I think I'd agree with that. Leave it open.
Okay. Okay, Mr. President, the recommendation is to leave the hearing open.
Okay, thank you.
The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on any matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions. However, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. The first person signed up for tonight's public forum is Peter Campabasso.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the city council. My name is Peter Campabasso. My address is 3 Park Street, Leominster. I appear tonight regarding petition 1919 on behalf of Middlesex Integrative Medicine. The petition is requesting a letter of support or a letter of non-opposition for them to apply for a retail dispensary in Waltham. I did submit some information to the city clerk. I did correspond with Counselor Dombrowski. I would like to submit a request to amend the petition, to correct some grammatical and typographical errors, but more importantly, to correctly identify the property address. It's 305, where am I? 305 Second Ave, Waltham. I think on the petition I typed 205 Second Ave. And I would also like to request, if possible, when the petition comes up for discussion, if the council would entertain a motion to recess, so I can explain a little more and answer any questions the council would have.
That's not going to happen when we're in session. But potentially, we might be able to do something at a later date. Not going to recess for this.
Okay.
All right. We're, yeah, let's see how it goes, Peter.
All right. If that's the case, I just want to point out, based on some of the discussions I've had, the host agreement that was entered into by Middlesex Integrative in the City last summer is reflective of what the current trend is as far as host agreements are concerned. I think what's important for the council to remember is, Middlesex facility here at Mohawk Drive, which construction has commenced on, is strictly a cultivation facility. So by state regulations and by the city's own bylaw, there will be no retail sales. So technically, there will not be any sales tax generated either to the state or to the city based on the local option. It's strictly an inventory payment based on the amount of pounds of marijuana that's cultivated from the facility. The facility itself has not changed in size, and the way the regulations are in place right now with the Cannabis Control Commission, it basically boils down to what type of, how much production would be made and where it would be distributed to. So if you look at those regulations in the city's bylaw, MEM can only distribute from that particular site to a registered medical dispensary. When they were before the council for the special permit for the cultivation facility, at that time, they did have one RMD retail site, which they disclosed. And in the host agreement, there is language...
Peter, excuse me for one second. Folks, if you guys are having a meeting over there, could you just walk out into the hall, please? Having a hard time hearing. Thank you. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
You can have more than two minutes.
And I appreciate that, because I just want to, I do want to point out some stuff. In the host agreement, there is provisions that did identify the existing RMD facility, and there was mention of potential other RMD facilities. So it was disclosed. And that was disclosed in their original special permit application. Point being, when you call down to Boston, there is no specific requirement that says in the regulations governing this and licensing this, that you need a local letter of support from a non-host community. But because the commission feels that there might be some increased activity at the cultivation site, they want the host community for the cultivation site to be aware of what's going on. Hence, the request to the city of Leominster, because you are the host community for the cultivation site. The site is not going to increase in size, so that whatever was approved by the city council and the special permit is still in place. And what they project to be able to produce is still accurate. And the way the host agreement is drafted, and it will give the city payments based on the highest yield cultivation. So I would ask that the council act favorably upon the request. It will allow MEM to complete and submit an application to the Cannabis Control Commission for a second retail dispensary, but more importantly, if they have two facilities, they'll be growing, and it'll allow them to produce the highest yield, which will yield the highest payment to the city of Leominster. And if you do have questions, I will be here, so I'll gladly answer them.
Okay. If I may, first of all, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for...
It's great to see a former city councilor at the podium.
Thank you.
So I recognize that. I didn't want to be rude to you, but the protocol's not going to be triggering subcommittee meetings during a council meeting.
That's fine.
Where we have to recess. So if the subcommittee, Legal Affairs, cannot render a recommendation tonight, and they need more information, then they'll hold a subcommittee meeting on this matter, and at that point, you would be invited to attend.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I appreciate the extra time.
You're welcome. The next speaker, Ed Baletta.
Good evening, my name is Ed Bartlett. I'm the CFO of Middlesex Integrative Medicine. My penmanship isn't so great.
I'm sorry. My eyes are getting old, too.
And I just want to reiterate a couple of facts about Middlesex Integrative Medicine, where we are now. We are still opening only medicinal marijuana facilities. We're not in the recreational space yet. We understand that if we do move in that direction, we would be coming back to the city council for a special permit, even to grow in the same facility that we're in now. So right now, all of our sales will be through either Norwood or Waltham, will be only medical marijuana only. In fact, Waltham is now underway of adopting a bylaw for adult-use marijuana, and Norwood has a ban on it. So we're, that's much further down the road. So all we're asking for now is to comply with what the now Cannabis Control Commission requires. When we file an application for Waltham, we must tell them that both communities are aware of what we're doing and accept that we're here in both Leominster and in Waltham. And at this point, we're about maybe two weeks away from filing in Waltham, and once that happens, we'll be able to then file with the Cannabis Control Commission. But our sales, and this has been, you know, one of the things that's happened in the process of the adult recreation, is that there is a sales tax, and that's two components to that. That has no application to the medical side. There is no sales tax applicable to medical marijuana, and that's why we developed the formula we have, which is based on what we produce, and that's what the payments will be based on. So hopefully, we act favorably in giving the letter of non-opposition again.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Baletta.
Thank you.
Would any other member of the audience like to address the council? Second time.
Good evening, my name is Ken Hanson, 34, Duggan Drive, Leominster. This is in regard to C-38, in the communications section. A recent letter from the mayor was very encouraging with regards to the legal acceptance of Duggan and Comstock Drive. I'd like to thank the mayor, city councilor David Cormier, city councilor Mark Badanza, for their efforts to get the progress, the process started, the generation of the Unaccepted Streets report, and all the follow-up that led to that report. The residents and I look forward to the next steps and further progress. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. Would any other, excuse me, would any other member of the audience like to address the council? Second time, third and final call. If not, the public forum is closed. And then we'll recess, so you can have the interview with the Ways and Means, and then we'll get right back into the meeting, all right?
All right.
Please stand and join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with a roll call vote of the honorable members of the council. Begin with Councilor David Cormier.
Present.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Councilor Ottinger.
Present.
Councilor Badanza.
Present.
Councilor Shala Fozefar.
Present.
Councilor Dombrowski.
Present.
Councilor Frida.
Present.
I am present. Eight councilors are here this evening. We did have our first order of business to deal with two, four, five different sets of meeting minutes. However, out of respect to Councilor Feckley, who was ill this evening and unable to attend, I'd like to extend the courtesy to her to present them to the council when she's feeling better. So we're going to put them on hold. We do have a couple of amendments or things to add on to the minutes, so Councilor Frida, thank you very much on that, if you can submit them for the assistant clerk. And if anybody has any other items they'd like to help clean the minutes up a little bit, if necessary, just submit them for the next meeting. We appreciate that, okay? Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to...
Before we have the motion to recess, if I may, we had a great loss in the city of Leominster, actually two, this past week. One of them, a gentleman by the name of William McDonald, and many of us know Bill and his wonderful family that he has. Bill was a very dedicated educator for over three and a half decades in the city of Leominster. Bill was probably one of the greatest guys I ever knew in the business, but he was also a great human being as well, and raised a beautiful family here in the city of Leominster. He went through a lot with the school department. The school department went through great changes. They went through the modifications of their curriculum as far as the K through eight concept. They went through major building renovations and programs. And from what I understand, Bill ended up being a great principal at the Sammaset School just before he had the ability to retire. So at this point, I would like to ask for a moment of silence for Bill McDonald and the legacy that he left behind, and the thousands and thousands of childrens in families whose hearts he touched. Thank you. Would anyone else like to add to that? Councilor Frida.
Yes, I would. And you're right on target, talking about his character. But I just wanted to add, as a former city councilor, at the funeral this morning, Counselor Savatelli did the eulogy and did an incredible job. Spoke about the number of thousands of kids that he influenced along the way, how he worked his way up from teacher to assistant principal to principal, and just his whole love of children and education. So, and he talked a lot about the tumultuous times, that Bill was the assistant principal at Gallagher. And I was on the school committee when we closed that school to save a courthouse and overcrowd our schools, which is a horrible situation. So condolences to the family. I mean, it was a really nice service this morning, well-deserved for a great guy. But again, I wanted to reiterate the great job Counselor Savatelli did on the eulogy.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, thank you. If not, I just want to, I want to move forward to the next young man. Some of us, being lifelong residents of Leominster, remember this kid. This kid that went to Leominster High School at a day where bullying was not an uncommon thing and very well accepted in some cases, especially around athletes and other things. And a kid that lived with a tremendous disability and handicap, physical handicap, and also in his later years, developed a disease. And this young guy was without question Mr. Leominster. And when I saw that Jack Selly, a Leominster sports enthusiast and champion, started a GoFundMe page, and they're going to put a bench down Doyle Field in memory of Joey Casey, how appropriate it would be. You know, despite some of the turmoil that he had in his life, it was really about a kid with some great character and courage deep down inside. And, you know, there's some great photos that depict Joe running out of the locker room at Doyle Field with the football team, you know, "We're number one." If the kids didn't care about him so much back in those days, that would have never happened. But he had that respect, you know? So even though he had to deal with his disability and handicap, he had the respect of those who really understood his passion and his love for them, to help champion them. So at this point, I would like to have a moment of silence for Joey Casey, Mr. Leominster. Would anyone like to add to that? Would anyone like to add to that? Okay, we'll move that. And Councilor David Cormier, you had a motion?
Yes, a motion to recess for the interview.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we're in recess. Thank you. All set? Councilor Frida?
Yes, Mr. President. As the clerk of Ways and Means, and hopefully Councilor Fekley will get feeling better soon, we have an interview with Michael Schein, Office of Emergency Management Administration Unit. Is Michael here?
Yes, ma'am.
If you would come into the council chambers.
Okay.
You could just double-check to be sure that the microphone is on. Should be a little red light there that...
I guess it's on.
Michael, thank you for coming in. This is a practice for the city council to anyone who volunteers or works for the city in some capacity, comes in and has an opportunity to tell the public who they are, who you might encounter, and just for us to get a feel as to how, you know, you, why, how you got here, why you want to work for emergency management, and a little bit about your background that would help the position. So, I'll let you start and maybe have some questions after.
Certainly, Madam Counselor, thank you. Mr. President, city councilors, good evening. My name is Michael Schein. I'm a resident of the town of Devon. I live on Eight Bates Street. I've been a resident there just under six years now. I've been a member of the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary for the last three-plus years. The reason why I have asked to become a volunteer with the Leominster Office of Emergency Management is because we recently started having our meetings at the facility for the Office of Emergency Management, and it's my understanding that they are in need of civilian volunteers to help out in times of need here in the city of Leominster. I'll be honest, folks, six months ago, I didn't even know the city of Leominster had an Office of Emergency Management. I honestly thought those were from big cities like Boston and Worcester, places like that. I was very happy to hear that there was an office for emergency management, especially with the, they asked, not just for people to work there, but also to volunteer there. I feel volunteering and, I guess, best way to put it, giving back to the community is one of the best things any citizen can do. It's one of the reasons why I joined the Coast Guard, Coast Guard, no, the Auxiliary. So, I guess, out of a sense of that they need civilian volunteers, I decided to apply.
Okay, what do you feel to strengthen your background to work? I'm not sure what the administrative unit actually involves, but I'm sure you must have some connection there.
I was asked that question too during the preliminary, the interview that I conducted with the members of the Office of Emergency Management. I've spent the last couple of years working for a company where I do a lot of purchasing, so I'm used to doing buying from different vendors, filling out reports. I've supervised anywhere from five to a hundred different employees in various companies I've worked for over the last twenty years. So, I feel I can bring some of the supervisor skills, some of the management skills that I have, some of the administrative skills that I've learned over the years to help assess with the Office of Emergency Management. As well, as I told the board that night, I'm a person that likes to learn new things, and I understand that they have a need in different areas, not just the administrative part of the OEM. And I, as I explained to them, I'm willing to learn. If it's something that needs to be done, if it's something that they need someone to work with, give me a call.
Well, there's a great team of mentors there to guide you along the way, for sure. And it is our best-kept secret. It's a phenomenal place, and we certainly know it's there and certainly appreciate it. So, I think that's all the questions I have. I'll go to Councilor Dombrowski, who's also on the committee.
No, I don't have any questions. I just noticed that you've got a very diverse resume, you know? So, just, you know, thank you for volunteering. It's greatly appreciated.
Any other councils have any questions to Council President?
Michael, I think you have a very reserved presentation tonight because Jimmy LaBlank would not send you down here if you weren't an All-Star. That's for sure. And, you know, you're talking about administration, administration, just looking over your resume quickly, all the management skills you have and developed. I'm sure that there is a vision for your existence with that group. So, we deeply appreciate you coming into Leominster and your willingness to get involved, and we look forward to working with you. Anything we can do to help you, just let us know.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilor Ottinger?
I would concur with the President regarding Mr. Schein's resume. Just curious, you're in the Coast Guard Auxiliary?
Auxiliary, yes, sir.
What do you do in the Auxiliary?
Basically, the Auxiliary is an adjunct component to the United States Coast Guard. We do everything from private vessel inspections to boat safety classes. We do have some members, we're about thirty thousand strong across the United States. Some members actually do serve active duty on Coast Guard bases, anywhere from administrative functions to actually doing boat patrols. So, I'm still kind of learning, and actually, this year, I'll be taking on a couple of positions with them. One of them is a materials officer, so I'll be in charge of ordering all the supplies for the flotilla that we use, which is everything from the supplies that we use during our training sessions for either boat safety or first aid, as to also any other materials that the flotilla would need. So, I'll be, I'll be in charge of that for this coming, for the next two years.
So, that background will also help you with the OEM?
Yeah, I think it would probably be a good strength for me.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other councils have any questions or comments? If not, our committee will request that the Council President allow your appointment to be brought to the top of the agenda so that you'll have an idea right away.
Thank you, Madam Counselor.
All right, thank you for coming in.
Thank you all. Good evening.
Thank you. Good?
Good.
Okay, great, thank you.
I think I'm good. I think I'm done.
Yeah, they see it all tonight. Okay, great. Okay, we're going to be, we're back in session. We're going to begin with communications from the mayor, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. C-38, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, to accept dug-and-drive and Comstock Road as public ways.
Communication thirty-eight is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course with a referral to the DPW and the City Engineer.
Can we, you mind if we do Copman and Page as well, city solicitor?
We have a...
You don't have to. Oh, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, good.
Thank you, though.
Council Frida?
What I'd like to do is to get a list of all the streets that need to be accepted and how many of them are Northwoods Corporation's responsibility. Not that it has anything to do with this, but I think in fairness to everybody else out there that's watching, so that we can determine and tell them exactly how we're going to go about accepting these streets. I know ironically Attorney Campabasso was the city solicitor when we went through years of getting Bicentennial and Independence Drive and that entire area accepted. And it was a little more complicated because of the fee on the street, but certainly this is a good beginning. But I think we owe it to particularly white councilors who have streets that are not accepted yet, to tell them how the process will work. So, if we could just get that list, I would appreciate it.
Do you remember, Council Bonanza?
It's been done. I wrote a report that's about fifteen pages long that lists not only all the streets, but also who owns them, whether there's a bond or not a bond, the condition of the pavement at that particular street. And I believe from discussions that the mayor has had with myself and the white three councilor, he intends to address all of them, and the priority is based on the condition of the pavement largely and move this process along. It's been a long time, and we're very optimistic now that the mayor is one hundred percent committed to getting this done. Also, I will note from the opinion that we received from Copman and Page with respect to this particular communication dated January tenth, Sherwin Everett, who's been assigned to this by the mayor, has laid out for us the process with particular acceptance of these two streets. And to the Chairman of Legal Affairs, first step in this process is to get a non-binding recommendation from the planning board. So, this petition, C-38, needs to be referred to the planning board with a copy of the plan, and they have a non-binding, they have forty-five days to render a non-binding recommendation or report back to us that we will ultimately have to act on, which will be an order of layout and an order of taking. Attorney Everett has already prepared the order of taking, and it's in the materials attached to that letter of January tenth that will ultimately have to be passed on by this council. But in deference to the neighborhood and the long wait that they've had, I'd like to get this moving along, and I'd ask you to refer it to the planning board for the, for their report with respect to this particular communication.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, you good with that?
No, absolutely. I actually assumed that it had been done, but yeah.
Okay, so, that petition's been given regular course with referral to the DPW, the City Engineer. We'll recirculate the list that Councilor Bonanza alluded to, and also our request information from the planning board. Anything else on that? Yes?
Yeah, through the chair, you mentioned road conditions and pavement, but do we have in that information, do we have infrastructure, as-built plans? I mean, are those things done in most of that list?
Most, all of those roads listed don't, do not have as-built plans. There are a few, I believe, that do. There are some questions as to others, but that report always, also lists whether or not, what the status of the engineering is on the particular road as well.
I think that's going to be important, just by way of letting the public know how we're doing this.
Yes.
Because that's going to be a number-one question.
We certainly haven't done this in a long time, so we'll be as transparent as we can, share as much information as we can, you know, demonstrate the rationale behind it, and also get the appropriate referrals. Okay, thank you.
I may want to add, as well as in a discussion I had with the mayor, we, as you know, we have a new planning director. So, one of the recommendations in my report was to adopt some new subdivision regulations that specifically relate to the acceptance of streets. And the language that I'm asking them to consider, or the committee is asking them to consider, is hopefully going to stop this problem from reoccurring in the future, which is also important.
Excuse me, one second. Anything else on that?
Mr. President, it's probably a good idea to send the, a copy of the letter from the city solicitor to the planning board with this. Just give them some guidance.
Absolutely. Good idea.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so again, communication thirty-eight has been given regular course with referral requested from the Department of Public Works, the City Engineer, to recirculate the detailed list Council Bonanza alluded to, and also the planning board as well. Thank you. We now move on to orders. We have communication thirty-nine.
C-39, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars to the stabilization fund, same amount to be transferred from the Recreation Department capital outlay expense account regarding to rescind appropriation of December tenth, twenty eighteen, due to the Four Near Park project not being funded by the state.
This is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Yes, Mr. President. I believe this is, requires a simple majority vote. Apparently, at the time, we were advised that both grants were being applied for. The prospect at the time was to receive one. That's in fact what happened. We did appropriate money for both because that was required as part of the grant application process. This money is no longer required, and it would be my recommendation to rescind the vote contained in C-39 and make the money available in the general fund, and I'd ask you to check with my committee members.
I yield the floor to the clerk, Council Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Do you remember, Council David Cormier?
I agree, but isn't this on here for the first time?
Yeah.
It's on here for the first time. These are all first time on the calendar.
I yield the floor back.
We can, we can go over a good course with it.
Okay, thank you. Regular course on communication thirty-nine. We now move to communication forty on page three.
C-40, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of nine thousand five hundred dollars to the city clerk expense account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund regarding the software upgrade.
Communication forty is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Regular course, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Communication forty-one.
C-41, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of four thousand dollars to the police department overtime account, same to be transferred from the disability fines receipts reserved for appropriation account.
Communication, I'm sorry.
Sorry, regarding parking enforcement details.
Communication forty-one is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Yes, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on communication forty-one, C-42.
C-42, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of six thousand six hundred dollars to the highway department expense account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund regarding OSHA requirement supplies.
Communication forty-two is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Yes, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on C-42. Communication forty-three.
C-43, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of ninety-two thousand dollars to the school department expense account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund regarding purchase of Chromebooks.
Communication forty-three is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on communication forty-three. C-44.
C-44, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of thirteen thousand dollars to the library expense account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
Communicate, go ahead.
Sorry, regarding purchase of two copy machines for public use.
Communication forty-four again is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
And once again, regular course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on communication forty-four.
Mr. President, just a point of water.
Sure.
Is Councilor on the library board? No?
Yeah, I am. I'm not precluded from voting on this. I've researched that.
I just wondered if you should go to the next member of the committee.
It's up to him to make the disclosure.
It's not a problem. I've already researched that issue. I can vote on library matters.
Okay. We now move on to petitions, beginning with twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, Elizabeth Wood, Planning and Development Director, to amend the zoning ordinance accordingly, remove the section of Article thirteen, twenty-two dash seventy-one point one, that states signs may not extend above the building's roof line to indoor the wall upon which the sign is located. This contradicts Section twenty-two dash seventy-one dot nine dot one, that covers sign height and states that a sign may extend eight feet above the roof line.
Petition twenty-nine is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course with a referral to the building inspector.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Twenty-nine has been given regular course with referral to the building inspector. Council Frida?
Yes, Mr. President, through the chair. I'd like to have her come down. We haven't met her yet, and I'd like to have her come before us to talk about this petition and see who she is.
That's fine.
There is a hearing that will be scheduled at one point.
Yeah.
Okay? All right, good. Okay. All right, so the clerk will note that with a friendly invitation. Thank you. We now have on page four, matters before the city council. The first thing I'm going to do is refer to page five, and we have a candidate for Office of Emergency Management, Mr. Michael Schein. I'll yield the floor to the acting chair, Council Frida.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we heard tonight in the interview, Michael Schein comes clearly qualified for the position. Let me thank him for volunteering. And I would go to the other member of my committee, but I think it's an unanimous decision to recommend.
It is.
Okay, good. All right. Councilor, the recommendation read for confirmation on the applicant. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Council David Cormier.
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Council Ottinger.
Yay.
Council Bonanza.
Yay.
Council Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Council Dombrowski.
Yay.
Council Frida.
Yay.
I should record a yay by a vote of eight to nothing. I should record a yay by a vote of eight to nothing. Confirmation is taking place. Thank you, Mr. Schein.
Thank you.
Appreciate working with you. Best wishes. The assistant clerk has something for you to sign, so she'll, she'll meet you all in the hall.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome, thank you. Out of respect to Mr. Campabasso on nineteen nineteen, I'm going to move that right to the front. All right? So we're going to go to legal affairs right now, page four, nineteen dash nineteen. I'll yield the floor to the chairman of legal affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition nineteen dash nineteen, Middlesex Integrative Medicine Care of Law Office of Peter A. Campabasso, P.C. Request a letter of support or non-opposition to Middlesex Integrative Medicine for proposed retail RMD located at two oh five Second Avenue, Waltham, Massachusetts, to be signed by the mayor to authorize members of the city council. I believe we're still looking for a referral from the mayor's office on this.
Before we begin, the petitioner has submitted an amendment to that petition.
Okay.
Would you like the clerk to read it, or would you like it?
Uh, I can read it. Let me just, let me just grab it here.
Clamp, could you pass it?
You don't have it yet, do you?
It's right here.
Oh, I don't have it yet?
No.
Okay.
So this is going to be subject to an amendment and a vote on that.
Okay, so the proposed amendment from the petitioner reads, I respectfully request that the petition be amended to read as follows. Approve a local letter of support or non-opposition to Middlesex Integrative Medicine for a proposed retail registered marijuana dispensary, RMD, to be located at three oh five Second Avenue, Waltham, Mass., to be signed by the mayor or the duly authorized members of the Leominster City Council. So I would, I would motion that we amend the petition accordingly.
Do we have a second on that? Councillor Schellepho Zephyr, a second. And any questions on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, I'm going to do a roll call vote with this, beginning with councillor David Cormier.
Yay.
Councillor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Councillor Ottinger.
Yay.
Councillor Bonanza.
Yay.
Councillor Schellepho Zephyr.
Yay.
Councillor Dobrowski.
Yay.
Councillor Frida.
Yay.
I should record a yay by a vote of eight to nothing. The amendment is taking place. I yield the floor back to the chairman of legal affairs with the amendment.
Okay. We're waiting a referral from, from the mayor's office. But having said that, from my perspective, this is a fairly cut and dry matter. I don't know, you know, if any of the other members of legal affairs have any input on that, but.
Thank you.
I mean, they're, they're opening a second.
Right.
Dispensary in another town. They're not increasing their size at Leominster. They may be increasing the volume of material that they're producing, which is only going to benefit the city. So I'd ask councillor Frida.
I yield the floor to councillor Frida.
I'd be more comfortable waiting for the mayor's recommendation, and I know councillor Feckley's been on top of these things as well. I'm sure she'd want to be here. Could we give it further time? Is that affecting, affecting any timeline? Is there a timeline?
If I can yield the floor to the third member, councillor Bonanza.
I have another issue. I spent some time researching the host agreement, and I have a concern. In the host agreement, paragraph eight, section A, it indicates that if either Leominster and/or the Commonwealth of Massachusetts adopts a sales or excise tax on the sale of marijuana for medical use, the host agreement is void, which means we get no revenue. Now, as it stands right now, there is no sales tax from the state on medical marijuana. That doesn't mean that isn't going to change in the future. There's been a lot of changes in this in just the last year. I would ask that we get rid of that clause. If, if the, the idea is, I think of that language, is if you, if the locality's going to start charging a tax, and is going to receive the benefit of the tax, then you don't get the benefit of the host agreement. But in our case, where it's a cultivation site, even if a tax on the sale of medical marijuana was adopted, we still wouldn't have any revenue, because we wouldn't be, it's a cultivation site, it's not a dispensary. So if that occurred during the pendency of this host agreement, we would end up with zero revenue from this. I think this is an opportunity to fix that.
All right, well, why don't we, I know later on, on the, the ordinance regarding parades, I was going to be scheduling a subcommittee meeting. So why don't we further time this, and we'll also put this on the subcommittee meeting agenda.
That's, that's fine.
And invite the petitioner down.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
And while, while, while they're here, I, I think the next meeting is January twenty-eighth. I don't know if, if we can have our subcommittee meeting at five o'clock that afternoon. Does that work for everybody? Mr. President?
I won't be back in town from work that early, but have it. I'll just join you guys when I get here.
Okay.
Okay?
So we'll schedule the subcommittee meeting for January twenty-eighth at five o'clock P.M. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councillor, the recommendation read for further time on nineteen dash nineteen, establishing a subcommittee meeting on January twenty-eighth at five P.M. here in the council chambers. Thank you. We're going to go back to finance now, beginning with the finance, city of Leominster financial report.
Did we vote on that? We didn't vote on that.
I'm, I'm sorry.
We got a vote to further time it?
We do.
So the recommendations for the time.
Any other comments or questions on the floor? Okay, if not, all those in favor of further time, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, further time. Thank you. We now move on to the city of Leominster financial report.
I did not get a financial report. I did not get a stabilization fund breakdown tonight.
Do you have one? No. No, we need, clerk didn't receive it either. Okay, we'll hold off on that. We'll begin with communication thirty-three. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. C dash thirty-three, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, relative to the appropriation of seventeen-thousand-five-hundred dollars to the police overtime account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Now, this is an interesting, some interesting background to this. Apparently, the patrolman's union at the police department, a few years ago, bargained an item, and they agreed to carry defibrillators in the cruisers. And in exchange for that, a fund was established for supplemental overtime in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars annually, and that would be used for such things as covering extra patrols during the fireworks times, like around the Fourth of July, doing extra parking enforcement, things of that nature. Apparently, the fund in its first year of existence was actually not used, so an unfair labor practice was filed, and the resolution to the unfair labor practice was to, basically, that thirty-five thousand that wasn't used went back into the general fund, and the resolution was to supplement this fund by an amount of seventeen-thousand-five-hundred dollars in this fiscal year, and again, next fiscal year, so that the money that was never used for the extra policing would be restored and ultimately be available for those types of police matters in the future. So based on that explanation from the chief, it would be my recommendation to grant C dash thirty-three, and I ask you to check with my committee.
Councillor Pauline Cormier, the clerk.
I agree.
There a member, councillor David Cormier.
I also agree.
Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
The unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant C dash thirty-three.
Councillor, the recommendation to grant communication thirty-three. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of that recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, the communication's been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of seventeen-thousand-five-hundred dollars be appropriated to the police overtime account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
Councillor, that recommendation read. Are there any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Communication thirty-four.
C dash thirty-four, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, relative to the appropriation of forty-five-thousand dollars to the library expense account, same to be transferred from the library state aid reserve for appropriation account. This is an annual right. This money was state aid that we received last year, and is paid into a fund within the city's jurisdiction. And what we have done customarily is, in the following fiscal year, transferred that money out, out of that city fund, to the library for the library's use, for library, library activities. Would be my recommendation to grant C dash thirty-four, and I'd ask you to check with my committee.
I yield the floor to the clerk, councillor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
There a member, councillor David Cormier.
I also agree.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
Yes, the unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant C dash thirty-four.
Councillors heard that recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions on communication thirty-four? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, communication thirty-four's been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of forty-five thousand dollars be appropriated to the library expense account, same to be transferred from the library state aid reserve for appropriation account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councillor, that recommendation read. Again, are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll now move to communication thirty-five.
Yes, Mr. President. C dash thirty-five, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, relative to the appropriation of one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-five-hundred dollars to the highway capital outlay expense account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Accompanying this communication was a letter from the DPW director, Mr. Racine. Dear mayor, the Leominster Department of Public Works respectfully requests a supplemental appropriation of one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-five-hundred dollars to the highway general expense account for a new John Deere loader. Two of our existing loaders are no longer able to pass inspection and can no longer run on the road after a twenty-one and eighteen-year lifespan, respectively. We need this equipment to load and move snow in the winter, as well as move material during the construction season. Attached to that is a spec from Schmidt Equipment, Inc., suggesting what the outfit of the new loader is, and what the ultimate purchase price is, which is a hundred-and-sixty-thousand-five-hundred dollars. That's for our two thousand nineteen Deere four-four-four K. I'd ask you to check with my committee. I am in favor of granting it.
I yield the floor to the clerk, councillor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
There a member, councillor David Cormier.
I also agree.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
Yes, Mr. President. The unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant C dash thirty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councillor, the recommendation read to grant communication thirty-five. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, communication thirty-five's been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-five-hundred dollars be appropriated to the highway capital outlay expense account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
Councillors heard that recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, communication thirty-five has been adopted. Communication thirty-six.
Yes, Mr. President. C dash thirty-six, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, relative to the appropriation of forty-thousand to the school department expense account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This involves the purchase of a new Ford three-fifty XL pickup truck with a, attached to the communication is an estimate from GMC Colonial Group, and this truck would be outfitted for, with a, with a plow to remove snow, and will replace aging equipment, and it would be my recommendation to grant C dash thirty-six.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your committee?
Could, could you check with my committee, please?
Okay, sure. I'll yield the floor to the clerk, councillor.
I agree.
Councillor David Cormier.
I also agree.
Thank you, please requalify.
Yes, Mr. President. The unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant C dash thirty-six.
Okay, thank you, councillor. Councillor, the recommendation read to grant communication thirty-six. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? Councillor Schellepho Zephyr.
Yep, thank you. Through the chair to the finance chair.
So in looking at the, looking at the quote, the grand total of the quota is fifty-three-thousand
dollars. The vehicle total is thirty-one, and there's some upgrades included in the plow. So this request is for forty thousand, so I'm assuming that the balance comes out of the school department budget?
That's correct.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So this is kind of partial, permanent for the truck. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
No.
Good. Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, communication thirty-six's been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of forty thousand dollars be appropriated to the school department expense account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councillors heard that recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, we're going to do, indicate, oh, God, tired, sorry about that. All those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, communication thirty-six has been granted. I have to slow down just a here, guys. Thank you for your work, appreciate it. We're now going to move on to legal affairs, communication twenty-four. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Communication twenty-four, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, allow Roll On America to connect into the Leominster water system through a special act of the legislature. There was a brief public hearing tonight that was kept open. I'm going to defer to my members as well. There seems to be a dearth of information on this, at least from my perspective, and it differs from the other ways that we've had properties from other municipalities connect with the water system. So I, I would like to give this further time, and also put this on the subcommittee agenda, and ask Roger Brooks, you know, if he doesn't mind coming down, and just explaining what's going on and why, why the city is proposing that we do it this way. And, and I defer to my committee members as well, but my recommendation would be further time.
Thank you. I yield the floor to councillor Frida.
I agree. There's a lot of information missing, and we did, I'd like to get the information when we looked at this before. I know there was a discussion about intermunicipal agreements. So I, I think we need to, sometimes we do it, sometimes we don't. I think we need to, to look at that, and we need to, I don't know if we're going to get Roger Brooks. He's retired, you know?
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
He's working just a day or two a week, but, whether you get him to come out at night, I don't know.
Right, here's another question.
But, but yeah, he, I think it's necessary to find out if we can afford the water going to another community.
Perhaps, perhaps ask, ready to come down? Perhaps ask Mr. Racine?
We'll start at that level. He may delegate somewhat.
I think Roger will come. I'm just being, I'm just letting you know he retired.
Okay.
Working a day or two a week.
Thank you, Counselor Bonanza.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. This is all a little mysterious to me. There's a potential lot of work here legally for the city as well, and, you know, I don't... I don't know that we want to commit that kind of money for water rates. And then the other issue is, where's this going? Is this for Roll On America? Is there something more in store there? Those are kind of questions I think we need answered.
Yeah. And also, Mr. President, my memory is that we have an intermunicipal agreement relative to Orchard Hills, the gym. You know, and if that's the case, I don't know why that can't be amended or Roll On America, which is right next door, just added to it somehow. But, you know, I guess we can ask all those questions at the subcommittee meeting.
Right.
So, the recommendation is further time.
Okay, and if you need any support from department heads or the mayor on that, just contact the clerk and we'll move forward.
Okay.
As you... You know, you may not think of it tonight, but there might be another essential question or an element that's missing for that subcommittee meeting, so we'll fill the gap. Counselor Frida?
I just wanted to add, the other member of Legal Affairs mentioned the cost, and I think that's why we need Roger, because we may... We're going to charge them more money than what we charge our ratepayers. And we've done it with Lunenburg, so it might be an opportunity for us to make money with Roll On America. So... Which I'm sure they're fully aware of, because they would know the process. So, I think we really need to get the answers from the people that have them.
Is that the position?
Further time.
With all due respect to the manager who came down here tonight, thank you. We appreciate it. But I think we really need to speak to the owner of the business slash the owner of the property and also work out some details from this level. Okay, so, thank you. Counselors heard the recommendation for further time. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of further time, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, further time has been awarded to C-24. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and your committee. We'll now move on to Page 5. We have Public Service. We have 17-19. Is the chairperson ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. 17-19, National Grid, to install one singular own pole on Elm Street, beginning at a point approximately 22 feet south of the center line, the intersection of Elm Street, and continuing approximately plus or minus 8 feet in a south direction. We had a public hearing tonight. We closed the hearing. We had no opposition in pretty clear cut near the Sportsman's Club. And I think I'll go to my committee, but I don't think we have any issue with it.
Okay. I yield the floor to the clerk, Counselor Ottinger.
No comment. I agree.
Third member, Counselor Pauline Cormier.
I agree. I don't have an issue with it. I do want to point out, and I want to thank Mr. Tapley for showing up here from National Grid. When I first got on this council, we had a lot of issues with National Grid and their poles. And since then, they have really done a good job as far as keeping us informed, taking care of getting rid of old poles, and I think with having him here and his explanation, I have no complaints about it.
Thank you. Madam Chair, please requalify.
Yep, the recommendation from the committee would be to support 17-19.
Thank you. Counselors heard the recommendation read to grant 17-19. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, 17-19 has been granted. Thank you. We'll now move on to 18-19. Is the chairperson or chairwoman ready to report?
18-19, National Grid, to install one singular own pole on Tolman Avenue, beginning at a point approximately 135 feet southeast of the center line of the intersection of Dingly Street, and continuing approximately plus or minus 15 feet in a northeast direction. National Grid, to install one pole with an anchoring guy on private property with an easement to Service House Number 35. Again, we had a public hearing tonight, and I think we got a pretty good explanation about what needs to be done there. My concern, because it's in a residential area, was that the neighbors are okay with it, the homeowner is requesting it, and that seemed to be pretty cleared up tonight. So, my recommendation would be to grant. I'll go to my committee.
I'll yield the floor to Counselor Ottinger, the clerk.
I agree.
Counselor Pauline Cormier, third member.
I agree.
Madam Chair, please requalify.
Yep, the recommendation is to grant 18-19.
Counselors heard the recommendation read to grant 18-19. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, petition 18-19 has been granted. Thank you. We'll now move down to Old Business. We have Communication 20. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am. Communication 20, second reading of an ordinance. An ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the Revised Ordinances Entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Lemmister as follows. Chapter 13 of the Revised Ordinances Entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic is hereby amended as follows. Section 13-7 of the Revised Ordinances Entitled One Way Streets is hereby amended by adding the following. Nashua Street off-ramp from Lemmister Connector in a southerly direction. Section 13-18 of the Revised Ordinances Entitled Responsibility for Installation and Maintenance is hereby amended by adding the following. The following location shall be marked with appropriate signs as "Keep Right." Nashua Street southbound at Lemmister Connector off-ramp. Nashua Street northbound at Lemmister Connector. Lemmister Connector eastbound at approximately STA 34 and 92. Lemmister Connector westbound at approximately STA 34-13. Section 13-79 of the Revised Ordinances Entitled Yield Signs is hereby amended by adding the following. Nashua Street facing southbound drivers entering the Lemmister Connector. Section 13-81 of the Revised Ordinances Entitled Driving Upon Closed Street Prohibited is hereby amended by adding the following. The following location shall be marked with appropriate signs as "Do Not Enter." Nashua Street southbound at Lemmister Connector. Nashua Street off-ramp southbound at Lemmister Connector. Section 13-89 of the Revised Ordinances Entitled U-Turns is hereby amended by adding the following. Lemmister Connector westbound, Lemmister Connector eastbound. I'd ask you to defer to my committee members, but my recommendation is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield the floor to the clerk, Counselor Frida.
I agree.
Third member, Counselor Bonanza.
I agree.
Please requalify.
Unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance.
Counselors heard their recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this is the vote for the second reading of the ordinance. I'll begin with Counselor David Cormier.
Yea.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yea.
Counselor Ottinger.
Yea.
Counselor Bonanza.
Yea.
Counselor Shalifou Zephyr.
Yea.
Counselor Dobrowski.
Yea.
Counselor Frida.
Yea.
I should record as yea by a vote of eight to nothing. The second reading of the ordinance has been adopted. Thank you very much for your work. Are there any other items under Old Business? We'll now move on. Counselor, you have the floor.
I don't know if this is old or new business, but I'd like to go back to petition 2019. And as this is a zoning change, I think we need to schedule a public hearing, and I don't know if we should do that tonight or how that should work.
Okay, I'll yield the floor to the clerk for that.
We can schedule it tonight if you'd like, or we can wait until we hear from...
Probably makes sense to schedule it tonight on the record.
Sure.
Yeah, so I don't know what the calendar looks like.
Completely open for the 28th.
Okay.
You have a subcommittee meeting that night at 5:00, so we could bring it in. That'd be a good time to deal with it.
Yeah, what time?
May I suggest you invite the planning director to come down to that meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
6:30. Does that make sense?
That'll give us 15 minutes. That should be enough.
Yeah.
Okay, so, thank you for bringing this back up. Appreciate it. So, what will happen is, we're going to vote on establishing a hearing on 20-19 to be conducted at 6:30 PM in the council chambers on Monday, the 28th. In this vote, we're also going to send a friendly request to the new planning director to attend the subcommittee meeting or the hearing if she decides that she can't make one or the other. Okay? Any questions on that? All those in favor of establishing that hearing, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, the hearing's been established on 20-19 accordingly. Thank you for bringing that up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other items under Old Business? Counselor Frida.
I don't know if this is old or new, but we really need to do something about the heat here. I mean, I've sat through some cold meetings. Tonight is probably one of the... It is absolutely freezing. Tea is shivering over there. This is insane.
At one time, there was the luxury of Dr. Edward Cataldo, the podiatrist,
Yeah.
who was a beloved city councilor for a long time and school committee member. They put an electric heater under the president's desk.
And he sat in this seat, which is probably why he got...
He traveled with him that heater. Very smart man.
Supposedly, the building inspector won't allow a space heater, but somebody's going to figure something out, because this isn't even... This is wrong.
That's crazy.
I've never been down here where my hands are freezing.
I mean, I can't even write.
Yeah.
I mean, it's ridiculous.
Well, we're going to... I'm going to address it tomorrow morning on my way to work with the mayor. We'll see what we can do. Okay?
Thank you.
Usually, there's a lot of hot air down here from me, so that keeps us warm.
Can move your seat over to this side a little more.
I got you. You're good. Okay, we'll address that definitely. Okay, any other items under Old Business last time? Okay, we'll now move on to New Business. We have 4-19. First reading of an ordinance. Is the chairperson ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. 4-19, first reading of an ordinance. An ordinance amending Chapter 20 of the Revised Ordinances Entitled Streets and Sidewalks, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Lemmister as follows. Section 20-10 of the Revised Ordinances Entitled Parades, Processions, and Assemblies is hereby amended, rescinding the current text in its entirety and by inserting in its place the following, a new section, Section 20-10, Parades, Races. Mr. President, at the organizational meeting, I had submitted an amended version of what the police chief had sent us.
Yes.
And I know the city clerk had reached out to him, and he said he was available most Mondays for a subcommittee meeting. So, we have one on the 28th, and if we could invite him down and hopefully get this thing finalized once and for all.
Great idea.
So, my recommendation would be further time and to schedule this at the subcommittee meeting.
Okay, very good.
And I defer to my committee members.
I yield the floor to the second member, Counselor Frida. Third member, Counselor Bonanza.
Agreed.
Please requalify.
Unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee is to give petition 4-19 further time. Put this on the subcommittee agenda for January 28th and invite the police chief down.
Okay, Counselors heard that recommendation read. Thank you. To give 4-19 further time and also to request, in a friendly way, the chief to come down to the subcommittee meeting on the 28th at 5:00 PM. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, further time has been awarded. Thank you. We'll now move to 21-19. And... Why are we dealing with that here? There's no Ways and Means heading. Okay, perfect. Okay. So, these are resolutions. We have a couple of them from the city clerk that has submitted them. 21-19 is going to be referred to the chairperson or the acting chairperson of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. 21-19, Caitlin Huffman, City Clerk. Resolution authorizing a policy regarding electioneering during absentee voting for the 2019 local election. And I'm sure I have to read the resolution, because it's first time on.
We have to read it, yeah.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead, please do.
A resolution authorizing a policy regarding electioneering during absentee voting for the 2019 local election, whereas Chapter 54, Section 65 of the General Laws of Massachusetts prohibits, quote, "electioneering," end of quote, "the display or distributing of material intended to influence the actions of voters or within 150 feet of the entrance of polling places at an election of federal, state, and local officers, whereas an increasing percentage of Lemmister voters are taking advantage of their right and opportunity to vote in person by absentee ballot, period established by the legislature, and come to the city offices at 25 West Street in order to obtain absentee ballots or cast early ballots, whereas such voters should be given the same right and opportunity to cast or obtain ballots free of electioneering activity, as is enjoyed by voters who cast their vote on the day of the election, whereas observance of the 150-foot rule established by Chapter 54, Section 65 at the city offices during in-person absentee voting or the early voting period would not unduly restrict the ability of any person to display or distribute campaign messages to prospective voters approaching the city offices. And now, therefore, the City of Lemmister adopts the following regulation for the period designated for in-person absentee voting. No poster, card, handbill, placard, picture, or circular intended to influence the action of the voter other than those expressly authorized by General Law, Chapter 54, Section 65, shall be posted, exhibited, circulated, or distributed in the city clerk's office in the building where the city clerk's office is located, on the walls thereof, on the premises on which the city offices at 25 West Street stand within 150 feet of the building entrance door to said city offices. And this is the first time on the agenda, so the recommendation would be for further time. Check with the other members of... The other member of Ways and Means.
Counselor?
I agree.
Thank you. Please requalify.
Recommendation is for further time.
Thank you. Counselors heard the recommendation read on 21...
This is regular course.
Regular course, yeah.
Regular course.
Oh, oh.
A regular course, yeah, sorry.
Regular course, first time on the calendar. Okay, thank you. Regular course on 21-19. Thank you. We'll now move on to 22-19.
22-19, a resolution to support the continued efforts of encouraging all citizens to participate in elections and to educate the public on the importance of key election practices. A resolution to support the continued efforts to encourage all citizens to participate in election and to educate the public on the importance of key election practices, whereas the right to vote is one of the most important rights of citizenship in a democratic country. And whereas, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, more than 64% of white, non-Hispanic voting-age citizens exercised their right to vote in the 2012 presidential election, compared to more than 66% of voting-age African-American citizens, 48% of Hispanic citizens, and more than 47% of Asian citizens. And whereas, the nation's secretaries of state are firmly committed to protecting each citizen's right to vote and by extension, each citizen's right to register to vote. And whereas, the City of Lemmister supports all voter registration efforts in whose goal is to enfranchise all qualified voters. And whereas, the City of Lemmister continues to work with local community groups to educate the public on the importance of key election practices. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the City of Lemmister highly encourages all citizens to participate in elections and will continue to work with local community groups to educate the public on the importance of key election practices. I will check with my other member in the committee, but I believe the recommendation would be regular course.
I agree.
Thank you. Again, Counselors heard the recommendation read on this resolution, 22-19, for regular course. Thank you.
And I'd just like to add, Mr. President, congratulations to the clerk for doing this.
Yeah, it's good. It's awesome. Thank you. Thank you. We'll now move on to Community... Are there any other items under Old Business... Excuse me, New Business? Any other items? Okay, we'll now move on to Community Calendar. And talking of... Speaking of calendars, I'll yield the floor to Counselor Frida.
Yeah, just to let everyone know, we were late this year getting them out, because we changed it a little bit, but we have our Rotary calendars that are available. Same price, $20. Chance to win $50 a week for a year. So, if anybody would like one, they can contact any Rotarian or the mayor's office, and they will be available.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other items under the Community Calendar? Counselor Shalifou Zephyr?
Thank you very much. I just want to remind the community that there is a meeting on Tuesday, January 29th, at Skyview Middle School to talk about the foundation formula and the problems that the ongoing public school systems have with the way that the formula has been implemented. So, this is a follow-up to a meeting that was held last week up at Fitchburg State University. I know Counselor Frida was there, Counselor Marchionne was there, Counselor Cormier and myself were all in attendance. And at that meeting, there were 11 superintend... I think there were 11 superintendents from a variety of urban districts, Gardner, Fitchburg, Lemmister, a lot of small towns. Worcester actually was there as well. Winchendon, I think Lunenburg, but there was a real variety. And it was a very involved, very detailed presentation by superintendents and their business managers or school committee people that came with them about the problems with the foundation formula. So, this is... There is a follow-up meeting. Again, it's Tuesday, the 29th. It is at Skyview Middle School at 6:00. And I would encourage anybody with an interest in education funding to please attend, because it's mostly informational, but it's also... Which is very, very important so that people understand the real impact that the way the state funds public schools and the impact that's having on communities all across the state.
Thank you for bringing that up also. Thank you.
Is that tomorrow?
29.
29.
29. Tuesday, the 29th.
Thank you for bringing that up. That's awesome. Any other items under the Community Calendar? If not, we now have table petitions upon which action is proposed. I'll yield the floor to the chairperson of, it looks like, Legal Affairs.
Yes, this is a petition 2-19, Gail P. Feckley, request to amend Chapter 22 of the Revised Ordinances Entitled...
First of all, Mr. Chairman, what is your desire for action or disposition? Take it off the table or leave it?
I think, given that it's Counselor Feckley's petition and she's not feeling well tonight, I think we should just leave it on the table.
We're going to leave it just like it is, and we won't deal with it.
So, I don't need to read it?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
Sounds good.
Any other items before the council? If not, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, ladies. Go home and get warm now.
The Lemmister City Council meeting is brought to you by the generous support of the Service Oil Company. 345 R. Lancaster Street, Lemmister. 978-466-1922.